Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May 15th City of Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Before we get started, we just want to provide a warm welcome to our colleague, James Quisenberry. Good to see you back in action, sir. And the next item is additions to the agenda. Does anybody have an addition to the agenda? Seen -- there better not be. Seen none, we'll go on to presentations and public input.
I said, point of order, do you say that there actually are no minutes for tonight? I just don't know if we need to state that.
Do I need to?
You can say there are no minutes.
There are no minutes. Okay. No additions to the agenda. We're going to go to presentations and public input. I'm going to ask the public to be patient, and we'll start with Examine Urbana, the Housing Chapter with Nick Olson. And this will be our, I believe, the last installment of the Examine Urbana introduction. And you have the floor.
Thank you all for being here. Really excited about this project and to be talking with it, talking about it with you all.
And for everybody at home, if you'd like to look at Examine Urbana, it's at examine.
URL.
urbanaillinois.us. He's got it up on the screen. So, thank you.
Yeah, so we're presenting the Housing Chapter tonight. Ten minutes only leaves time for an overview and a few highlights, so I'll try to hit those and maybe gesture towards some of the areas we're not going to touch as much. I'm also just going to present this as a slide deck because while the website is great, it's also very big and trying to scroll back and forth between the different sections could get a bit unwieldy. But we do have the website URL here, and we definitely encourage folks to visit it and explore. So with this chapter, we were trying to answer some pretty big questions related to what the housing market looks like in Urbana, how we got where we are, what some of the big areas of need are, the work we're currently doing to address some of those issues, and where we're heading as we look towards the future. To organize our approach to answering those questions, we separated this story map into four broad categories, each of which contains various subtopics. Those larger sections, as you can see, kind of on the top toolbar on this image, are history, today's Urbana, what we do, and future considerations. And I'll just briefly go through a general idea of what each of those sections contain. So the history section looks at different kinds of housing development in Urbana over the years, from development booms around the railroads and the university in the 19th century, through post-war housing booms and subdivision expansion, usually through FHA-backed loans. In looking at those things, we also found inevitably that that also led to looking at historic discrimination in the housing market. To touch briefly on that, up through the mid-20th century, there's a lot of documentation we looked at showing that discrimination ranging from banks to landlords to realtors and property deed restrictions basically limited housing options for local black households to the north side of the Champaign-Urbana area. At the time, this was often outside of city limits, so this would be in often makeshift structures which lacked basic utilities and other infrastructure, one of which we have an image of here from the Museum of the Grand Prairie. We felt it was essential to touch on this history, both as an acknowledgement of what was done historically, but also because the impacts of this historic discrimination very much continue to be felt in the housing market today. That brings us to the today's Urbana section, which offers some snapshot details of what the housing market looks like in Urbana right now and what some of the big areas of need are. It's not totally exhaustive, but we do link to a lot of other sources throughout if folks want to dive deeper on any particular topic. On that note, and as we head into the what we do section, I just want to mention that well, it was either myself or Lilly doing most of the typing or graphics for this. This involved a lot of poking of other people, both internally in our grants division, as well as other organizations throughout the city. As I'm sure you all know, housing work is something that gets done by a lot of people working in coordination. So just a shout out and thank you to everyone there. And a lot of those organizations are listed on this slide. And that's really what we're looking at at the what we do section, which is generally an overview of the work in housing the city and our community partners do. And again, a lot of those organizations are listed here. And then we close things out with the future consideration section, which just kind of ends with some of the big questions and takeaways regarding housing and the comp plan moving forward. So that's a general overview. I think what it makes sense to do with the time we have left is to go back to the sort of market snapshot in the today's Urbana section, dive a bit deeper into some of the major takeaways from that, and then wrap up by pointing to how that all ties into what we look at in the other sections. So a few basic takeaways. We have data showing that a majority, or about two-thirds, of Urbana households rent. We also have some data related to what HUD defines as housing problems. These include cost burden, which HUD defines as paying more than 30% of a household's income on housing expenses, overcrowding, plumbing issues, and so on. The most commonly experienced of these locally is cost burden. Overall, about 40% of households in Urbana have at least one housing problem, but you can also see that that number is mostly made up of renter households. Related to this, looking at just cost burden, again, about 40% or four in 10 households overall are cost burdened, but among renters, it's actually closer to half. We also know from the data that housing type varies by demographic group. So when renters in particular are more likely to experience these housing issues, and we also know that different demographic groups are more likely to rent, that impact is being disproportionately felt. So as you can see from this graphic, local African-American households predominantly rent, or local white households are much more likely to be owner-occupied. To call back to the history section and some of the story behind this, we already touched on some of the history of discrimination that excluded black households from homeownership for a long time, as well as even renting in most parts of town. And this in turn produced segregation at the neighborhood level, as well as a wealth gap as white households were able to establish equity, which black households were traditionally excluded from for a long time. And then this was passed down through generations, which is a big part in why we still have a wealth gap today. This ties into some things we look at in the what we do section, one of which is the impact that zoning has on the local housing market. Zoning, as you probably know, is generally how we regulate where, what types of things can get built. And we know that due to the established wealth gap between black and white households, black households are still going to be more likely to rent. And then when we think about how most residentially zoned land in the city is owned either exclusively for a single family or maybe single family and duplexes, which while not exclusively is more likely to be owner-occupied, you can perhaps see how that could play into perpetuating patterns of segregation. So we do have some data here, which Lilly was able to map, showing the amount of rental units, which we know through our rental registration program in different portions of the city. And you can see that the amount of rental housing in different portions of the city really varies a lot depending on what part of the city you're looking at. So a major takeaway is that a significant portion of Urbana households are struggling to fit housing costs within their budget, and that some groups are more likely to be experiencing this than others. One statistic from a recent study, the ARPA allocation plan, is that there's an estimated shortage countywide of about 7,600 units, which would be affordable to households earning below the area median. There are a lot of work that both the city and different organizations around the city are doing to address some of that affordability gap. And we get into a lot of that in the what we do section. Unfortunately, we don't have time to touch on everything. But just as one example, this is another map Lilly produced showing the location of Habitat Homes in different neighborhoods throughout the city. So that's just one affordable housing resource that the city and our partners are involved with. One takeaway from looking at all the work in the city that's getting done around housing, though, that we wanted to touch on is that a lot of the funding is coming from federal sources, whether it's CDBG, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, housing choice vouchers, or some of the projects related to housing that are receiving funding through ARPA. And federal money is great, obviously, and a lot of this work wouldn't happen without it. But when we look again at the scale of the affordability gap and think about how, you know, again, nearly half of all rental households are cost burdened, we're also thinking about how absent some shift in federal policy that puts a lot more money into housing, which would be great, we're unlikely to fill that gap entirely using just federal funds anytime soon. So one of the things we wanted to touch on towards the end of the story map is whether there are things we could be doing on a local level, especially things which broadly fall within the purview of planning work, that could help address some of that gap. So we look at some policies that have been tried in other communities, such as inclusionary zoning policies. There's a graphic for that here. Affordable housing overlays, accessory dwelling unit policies, community land trusts. Unfortunately, we don't have time to get into all the specifics on those, but generally, we looked at programs which aim to structure local regulations and incentives to hopefully be increasing local housing affordability. And just to explain this graphic a bit, since it's up on the screen, this is an example of one type of inclusionary zoning program, which couples an inclusionary affordable unit incentive by allowing an extra unit, or by allowing an extra story in developments that include affordable units. The way this makes sense is by including more market rate units. Those effectively subsidize the inclusion of affordable units. So this isn't necessarily to endorse any particular policy that we mentioned in the story map. That would all take more research to look into the applicability of different programs to our local context. But we did want to at least be thinking about some things that we could be doing within planning to meet some local housing goals. So I think I'm approaching, if not past, my time allotment. That was hopefully a decent overview. Again, couldn't touch on everything, but I encourage everybody to go to the website and dig a little deeper. And we look forward to continuing this conversation with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a little bit of time for questions. Anybody have a question? Go ahead, Maryelle.
So, thank you. It was a really nice presentation, but the data is fascinating. In addition to the exclusionary, inclusionary, sorry, did you review any other municipalities and what they're doing with affordable housing?
Talking about Cambridge.
Yeah, so there's another really interesting example. We look at a Cambridge, Massachusetts. They have what's called an affordable housing overlay. We have zoning overlays for other things. The way Cambridge's works is in certain portions of the city for developments, including a certain percentage of affordable units, kind of similar to the inclusionary zoning graphic. They'll allow increased building height, maybe some reduced parking, especially if it's near transit, for developments that include affordable units. Again, that's another way of kind of internal to the development itself. If you allow certain developments to take away things like parking or have a little additional height, that's going to allow them to get in more units overall. And when they're able to do that, that's able to offset some of the lower return they're going to get on affordable units. So that's just one example we looked at. We also looked at, you, community land trusts were another model.
Yeah. And I think we actually used an Urbana property kind of as an example for just kind of expressing like what it would look like. You know, there's some parts of town that have a lot of empty lots, and they're the perfect size, not for a lot of things, but for some things like housing, and what that would look like if the land costs were taken out of the equation. It's kind of like the 10% rule. It's not a ton of the land value, but you're creating this land value that someone could really buy into, generate value from, and then eventually sell to create that stream flow for, much like the Habitat Homes, where you actually saw empty lots being turned into $5.7 million worth of generational wealth.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just want to say, we will be hosting some meetings, one in each of the city wards, and we'll be doing an exercise. We invite the public. We'll be sending out some invitations, a lot of publicity around that. But it'll be a spending priority exercise where the public can actually see some of the decisions that have to be made with a limited budget to go from. So encourage everybody to look out for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up is staff reports. What's that? Oh, gosh, you better believe it. Yeah. We're now time for public input. Would anybody like to step to the microphone? You have five minutes to say whatever you would like. Going once, going twice. Okay. Seen none. We will now go to staff reports.
Oh, sorry, email. Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, go ahead, Sharice. Sorry. I'm getting too fast.
Okay, this is from Alan Max Axelrod. Good evening, Sharice. Please read the following at the Urbana City Council meeting of the whole meeting tonight. Urbana is a union town. Tomorrow will be the union election for the workers at the Vine Street Starbucks. There have been disgusting instances of retaliation against Starbucks workers nationally and as nearby as Peoria. I ask that Urbana take a stand for workers' rights. Please say loudly and clearly to the Vine Street Starbucks management that we will not tolerate nor accept any retaliation against the workers in our community in our union town. No one likes a bully. And abuses by management will not be ignored. I hope that the Urbana City Council we now have will voluntarily take this matter to task without the need for any pressure campaign. Whether it's a proclamation, or a resolution, or a visit to the Starbucks, I ask the Urbana City Council persons and the mayor to please be open with our community about how you are working to ensure management does not so much as attempt to retaliate against the workers at the Vine Street Starbucks. The rights we have are not enough. You need to step up to ensure your community is not going to join Peoria in being a witness to the gross retaliation efforts of the Starbucks Corporation. Oh, and by the way, the management that attempted the retaliation in Peoria was ultimately fired. Solidarity to the workers. Alan Max Axelrod. And Mayor Marlin has also read the email from Eldridge Carr, so I was, I don't have to repeat that particular reading.
Okay. And seen no other. Public input. We'll close public input and go to staff reports. Nope, nothing today. Okay. Onto unfinished business. We'll start with ordinance number 2023-05-013, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate. That is 903 North Division Street, 1605 Wiley, and 1107 North Gregory. And community development will be presenting, I'm assuming? And yes, Sheila.
Good evening. This was brought to council on May 1st, and as a result of that meeting, there were some questions that were asked, so I followed up with the answers to those in your packet. We plan on transferring the homes to the Housing Authority, who has a partnership with Cunningham Township to provide case management for those coming out of the prison system. So, does anybody have any questions on my memo?
James, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess the question that's been asked at the last meeting and brought up from the township supervisor is, what is the ability in what we're doing here to prioritize Urbana residents for utilizing this once it is in the Housing Authority's purview to manage?
Right. They will have a tenant selection plan that will prioritize that. And Township and the Housing Authority and I had a call last week on this, and so Township will be very involved in the development of that tenant selection plan.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Grace.
Thanks, Sheila, for answering those questions. I was kind of curious. I think you kind of clarified it, what justice involved meant, so being people coming out of the criminal justice system, returning back to the community, which I think is really great, and there's very limited services and resources. So I think that's wonderful. And I encourage the powers that be to also consult or connect with first followers, since that's kind of their area of expertise. I'm still trying to understand the requirements about affordable housing, because you talked in your answer here about the retention requirements that will be transferred to Housing Authority. And I'm just trying to understand what that is, is like, is that a document, or is that based off the original funding? Like, what does that mean?
Both. So, the 1107 North Gregory was built with home funds, and because it was a rental unit, they require it to be affordable for 20 years. It's already been in existence for probably, I don't know, five or six years. And so we will do a land use restriction agreement with them for the balance of that term. And then the ones, 903 Division and 1605 Wiley, the requirements for those, we got a grant through the Federal Home Loan Bank of Chicago. They required them to be affordable for 15 years, and we've worked with them and have an agreement to transfer that requirement to Housing Authority. So that just kind of protects the city.
Sure. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Chandra.
So, in one of your, one of the questions was about the money of the, from the sale of the properties to the Housing Authority, and that going back into the CDBG fund. It says that the social service grants would be increased for the upcoming year?
Right. So any program income that we receive, you can use 15% of that on top of our normal 15% of our allocation. So it will increase the amount available for programming next year.
Okay. And then the other 85% of the balance, is that going to maybe go into like, we, the seniors who need ref, repair, or whatever?
It'll go into our normal programming budget, yes.
Okay. I'd like to see it go to something specific that relates to, you know, people staying in their homes or getting their home repaired for low-income families or that sort of thing.
Right. Yeah. And it won't be the full amount going into CDBG, because the home money will have to return to the home bonds.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. I will move ordinance number 2023-05-013, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate at 903 North Division, 1605 Wiley, and 1107 North Gregory for approval.
Second.
Moved by Maryelle, seconded by Grace. Discussion. Seen none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion definitely passes. And we're on to new business. And the first item is ordinance number 2023-05-014, an ordinance adopting the International Code Council's 2021 Code Series. And again, community development. Mr. Hanson will have the floor.
Good evening. As mentioned, I come before you tonight looking for approval of the 2021 Code Series. We are currently in the process of adopting. This is the first step. With city approval, then I will have to notify the state of Illinois. And again, it'll be 30 days with them prior to implementation of the code. Currently, we are four cycles behind of the code cycle. So we, along with Champagne, are both moving to the 2021 Code. They're finishing up their review process now, so we're just slightly ahead of them on looking for approval.
Thank you. I have kind of an overarching question, which is, you know, Urbana has a lot of varying aging housing, from things that are over 150 years old to things that have just been built this year. So whenever we update code, if I remember correctly when I was looking at this, there are different requirements for older housing versus new construction. But I do think that some of the older housing will be impacted by these changes. I'm hoping you could give us a little bit of examples of how that would happen.
Correct. With every code cycle, there is what they call the existing building code. So there's a section of the building code or residential code that actually addresses that. And most of those things, obviously, can remain untouched. Really, the only time that they have to, you know, see any change is if there's significant remodel. And there's actually stipulations in the code. If there's things that are existing, as long as you don't make them less compliant, they can remain. But there's things that, you know, again, if you can change it and make it better and bring it up to code, then, you know, then you need, you know, it's supposed to be done as well.
So, I think it would be helpful for builders and landlords and homeowners if there was, I'll say, a cheat sheet, right? Like, here's highlights of some of the big changes that are coming with this code, so that's easier to digest, because right now, it's a very long. Our packet was 1,000 pages long. Getting through it was challenging. So I don't feel comfortable actually approving this tonight without having a better clarification of something that people can easily digest. So is that something that you can provide to the public and to council?
I mean, yeah, we can work on that. The actual, I mean, the, I included the minutes from the Building Safety Board of Appeals, and those are the significant, what we call the significant changes. And that's only, you know, a few pages long, you know, as far as the actual building code. Because again, this is, you know, the code changes every, you know, every four year, or excuse me, every three years, you know, on a cycle. And basically, not every code changes, right? You know, they change them as they're significant, you know, issues, right? You know, basically, their worst-case scenario. So it's the minimum code standard. But yeah, I mean, we can work on, you know, that, but like I said, it's, I mean, the significant codes are not, that change, you know, what we would consider significant, you know, is not a vast amount.
So let me rephrase. I had heard that with this change, that everybody would be required to have 15-year smoke alarms, for example. So all the smoke alarms would need to be replaced if they weren't meeting that 15-year. Those are the types of things that I think would be helpful for people to understand what the impact directly on them this code would have as they try and remodel or repair, whatever. If they have to go and get a building permit, then you have to have everybody come in, and you have to have the inspectors and so forth. So that's kind of what I'm looking for, if that makes sense.
So unfortunately, again, so much of the code depends on exactly what you're doing, right? So there's, like, for example, the building code, it actually breaks it into three different tiers, you know? So if you're doing, you know, X, you know, you may not have to do, you know, anything. If you're doing B, then, you know, you've got to bring this up. If you're doing C, then it's a whole nother, you know, level. As far as the smoke alarms, that's actually state law. So that's not the code. That's, you know, so again, those are the things that, you know, that's been adopted. That became a law January 1st of this year. So, but again, that's not covered in the code. That's the state of Illinois law.
All right. So, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point here.
Sure. No, I mean--
But I just think that it would be helpful. I understand the complexity in terms of things, but there should be something very straightforward that people can read through. Maybe it's the state law changing, maybe it's the city law changing. But, you know, these are good facts for people to understand as they think through remodels. The last thing that we want people to do is to not remodel, right? So we want people to keep their housing up to date. And if we put some kind of roadblocks in front of them that say, well, if you make this change, then you're going to have to rip all this out and change this as well. So that's what I'm trying to prevent, because I want to be able to give the residents and the business owners the ability to improve things by not getting buried under changes that they might not be aware of.
Was it just me, or was this included in the paper? It was not. Okay. I didn't think so. We had 1,000 pages, and this wasn't included. But did, was the email that was sent to council passed along to you about some perhaps errors that they, that a person found in the code related to, what is it, article, the Property Maintenance Code article?
No.
Okay. They said that, I can forward this along to you, and perhaps you can look at it and try to answer their question, if it is an error or a typo that could be.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just noticing there's gendered language in this. Is there a, a plan to move toward gender neutral language in compliance with the expectations for the city in general?
I will, I can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Grace.
Thanks for taking all our questions here. Yes, a lot of stuff. I would second Jay's comment about going towards gender-neutral language. Also, Mary Alice's about having a kind of simpler version for the public on what are the changes when someone needs to do renovations, right? And then also clarifying that there is some grandfathering for existing buildings, but it's when they want to make changes where you could open up this can of worms and things that are ideally, you know, safer and more efficient and some positive upgrades. But I definitely hear that concern and I think more digestible thing for the public would be great. I was wondering if we could add on another request to you, if it'd be possible to see what was changed after that committee meeting? Because I appreciated the minutes and the changes, but there were some. I couldn't tell what changes were made, like when it was talking about the state versus international codes. And I, when I went back and read it, I couldn't tell if that had already, how that had been changed from the meeting before and after, if that makes sense. So if you could tell us throughout the next time, a comparison of before and after the board meeting, what was changed, just to highlight what those changes were.
Okay.
And I was wondering if you could speak to energy efficiency. Are we sticking with a 2009 or is there any changes to increased energy efficiency requirements in this round?
So the International Energy Conservation Code, again, that's actually adopted by the state of Illinois. That's not adopted by local jurisdictions. So they're actually in the process of adopting the 2021 International Energy Code. But it actually was kicked back because the, based on the governor's requirements or request, it did not, there were some amendments they made that made it less stringent. And so basically, they actually had it overviewed and no, they're not going to allow any amendments to the energy code that's less efficient than what the code itself is. So whereas before, in the past years, there's been, you know, a few things where they've made it less stringent. And, you know, based off of this year's, they will not, nothing will be less stringent than the code itself.
So are we still operating under, is it the state 2009 code? And you're saying they're working on a 2021 update?
Currently, we're under the 2018 Energy Code. So, and like I said, that's adopted by the state typically the year following its release, by the time they go through the process and the hearings and such. So it's adopted by the state, but then it's basically passed down to the local jurisdictions to enforce.
Thank you.
Mary Alice.
So I'd like to make a motion to hold this in council with some further clarification on the items that we discussed tonight.
In committee?
Back to committee?
Are, are you asking to hold it in committee? You said in council.
Yeah, sorry.
Just clarifying. I'm happy to second that if it's in committee.
It's committee. Yes, you're right.
Jaya, are you seconding? Okay. So moved by Mary Alice to Senate Committee, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Charisse.
I just want to know if there's a particular deadline that we need to meet regarding, you know, voting on this, voting to adopt it. Is there a deadline that needs to, that we need to keep in mind?
There's not a, it's an internal deadline is the only thing. Like I said, once it's approved by council, then I have to notify JCAR with the state and it sits there for 30 days before we can adopt it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Mary.
So you had mentioned there were some state rules that had changed. If you do have an opportunity to make something up, it would be good to highlight what those changes are in the state law as well.
After you take your vote, if I could just ask a few questions of council to give us guidance about what you're looking for, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. Are we ready to vote? Looks like it. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
No. Okay. On a six to one, the ordinance is sent back to committee. Carol Mitten, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I think this is a little bit challenging for, for staff, us, to figure out exactly what you're looking for and give you something productive. And, and here's why, and maybe Nick can help me out after I, after I take a stab at this, which is, I think in terms of understanding the code, we typically look to professionals. I mean, the people that, that you deal with in terms of the, the sort of technical elements of the electrical code and the plumbing code and so forth are, are professionals. And they, they have actually, and you can correct me with, if I'm wrong, because this is me trying to, you know, understand your world, they are familiar with the international codes. And it's a question of, so sometimes it's like, are you using the 2021 or are you still, you know, so they're, they're, they're familiar with it. So if we attempt to capture the things that have changed, first of all, it's not just what's changed in the international code from the last time the international code was issued. It's changed from our version of that. And then it's what is relevant to a homeowner, for instance, because we don't want them, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they generally can't do plumbing on their own. Don't they have to use a licensed plumber? There's certain things they can't do, right?
Correct. If you own the house and live in the house, you can do your own plumbing work. You still have to get a permit.
Okay.
But if you do not either own the house or live in the house, or excuse me, if you do not own the house and live in the house, then yes, you have to hire a licensed plumber.
Okay. So if we make a list, then is the list intended to be comprehensive? Because if we make a list and we leave something off the list and someone says, well, I relied on the list that you published. And it's like, well, that was a representative list, not a comprehensive list. So do you, do you see what I'm struggling with here is trying to give you what you're looking for, but not giving the public a misleading sense of what the document actually is?
Mary Alice, you have the floor.
So, I mean, I'm certainly not a professional plumber or electrician or, you know, a subcontractor or anything like that. You know, to the, to the regular homeowner, you're looking for things like, I'll give an example of electrical. So electrical, you have the fuses, right? So you have different kinds of fuses. So is the requirement going to be that we pull out the knob and tube and then replace it with a standard one? That would be a big impact on a particular person who wants to upgrade their thing. So I, I guess I understand the, the difficulty in that there's lots of nitty-gritty details in the code that the general public is just not going to understand, myself included. But if we think about things like sewers, like is there a different change in terms of how we connect to the sewer? I'm just giving an example. These kind of layman terms, rather than we go from a five-inch diameter to a six-inch diameter, we don't need that level of stuff. But then your, your second question, I think, was more about how comprehensive does the list need to be? Is that, yes.
That's part of it, yeah.
And I, I understand that we aren't going to be 100% comprehensive. It'd be great if we could aim for that 80% of the big-ticket things. That's what I'm kind of looking for.
So I guess kind of piggybacking on that is, you know, are you looking just for residential? Because again, when we talk about the code series, we're talking about the residential code, the building code, the fire code, I mean, the existing building code, you know, the whole list. You know, if you're talking, which generally outside of residential, you're going to, you know, by state law, you have to use an architect, you know, so it has to be a design professional, you know? So again, you know, if you're looking just, that obviously narrows it down to, to one book, you know, and significant changes there. But again, like I said before, is the thing to remember is, you know, if it's existing and you don't touch it, the code doesn't require you to change it. So, you know, again, if you have knob and tube wiring, no, we don't allow you to put that in today.
Right.
But if you don't touch it, you know, you don't have to do anything with it. If it's there, and even if you're remodeling it, if you're not touching it, you know, then it's still usable if, as long as it's in a good, safe condition. So that's the big thing. Like I said, that's what the existing code is, is, like I said, if, you know, as long as you don't make it any worse than what it is, then it, it's acceptable.
So I, I know this covers a lot of different things and I would assume that the, any new construction, right? You'd have, you're starting from scratch. So having new rules, it's not that big of a deal as long as you have the book that tells you what the rules are. Then the second piece was, you know, I guess this would only be for a residential or maybe a small apartment complex. I don't know where the lines are in terms of residential. I mean, do apartments fall into residential? I would assume they would.
So, no.
They don't.
Residential code is one and two-family dwellings.
Oh, that's right. I read that.
If you're three, if you're three or more units, then it becomes a building, it falls under the building code.
Okay. Interesting.
Jaya.
So I, I think for me at least, in terms of clarification, some of it is, a lot of the council didn't even have a chance to see this because it wasn't in the paper packets. So this is a long document. It's an important document for people to understand. And so I think it's important for, for folks to have a chance to review it. And, and there was a question from the public about whether something was inaccurate or if there was confusion around it. And then there's also the, the question about whether or not we're going to continue to follow this general guidance for the city, which is to include gender-neutral language. So I think there are some, I will defer to others in terms of other information that is needed, but those are the pieces that for me would be helpful.
Okay. And, and I do want to say, I'm perfectly happy that it's still in committee and, and the gender-neutral piece got passed me, so I, I apologize. I feel like I, I let you down on that one. The email that I'm aware of that you're, I think you're referring to from Esther Pat is actually not related to this. It, it's not related to the building code changes. It's related to the building maintenance code, but it's a completely separate issue, which we'll be preparing a response for that. So really, just my questions, we're trying to make, this has the potential, what you're asking for is a big commitment of staff time. And we, and so I'm just trying to frame it out because I, I don't know that that's your intent. So I, I just want to make sure we understand and don't spend more time than is really what you're looking for.
Just to follow up real quickly, I don't expect it to be 100% exhaustive. I, I really want to make it easy for people to understand. And I understand getting into the weeds and so forth can, can lead you down some rabbit holes. So I'm looking for high-level changes, whether that's remodeling a kitchen, for example. These are some new things that we're going to ask for, for old kitchens.
James.
Yeah. What I, what I'm thinking of is in terms of the articles you read on the last week of December where someone says, here are the eight things about state law that are changing that you should be aware of, right? This, this should be something that is a summary of changes that a, a common person should be aware of, not a, you know, changes to how you wire a switch or an outlet or a thing. This needs to be what the layperson who would do this for themselves should know that's a distinctive change. And I, and, and so I would, I would ask that if we're going to make a list like that, we, we do it from that perspective of, you know, here are the, the big 10 things or the, here are the things that stick out that are gotchas for people that they might not pay attention to, rather than some kind of comprehensive list, which I, which I don't think is necessary. And I also think a lot of people shouldn't be getting into. They, they, a lot, a lot of people do their own work, but it has to be, it has to be permitted and inspected if they're doing their own work like this. So somebody should see those kinds of things and they should depend on professionals, good union labor to get it done. Thanks.
Charisse.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand from between the two of you, three of you, is are we looking for, from, from, for you and for James, are we looking for something like remodeling for dummies? Like, you know, this, you can't, you can no longer use, you have to, you know, you can't use three-quarter drywall now. You have to use an inch drywall or two-inch drywall or you can't use this particular type of spackle that now, now this kind of spackle, if you're going to respackle something. Or that's what I'm trying to understand because when I look at the, because we did discuss this on some one-on-ones or something when we were talking about the manual, the, the new manual. And I, I think that mainly, I don't, and I don't have a problem with keeping this in committee until I can, so I can absorb more things. But I think mainly what I'm thinking about is that mostly contractors and plumbers and electricians and so on and so forth will have to abide by these new, new adaptations to the, to the, the codes, the international codes, not generally our DIY kind of person or DIY person that is just trying to maybe add a little extra space or shelf or something into their house. I don't, and as long, it's kind of like what, what Grace was saying also is, a lot of stuff gets grandfathered in and anyway, and as long as you don't like accidentally blow out all of your electrical in your house because you were putting in a, a different light fixture or something, then you don't really have to, you don't have to worry about it unless the electrician that comes in to fix that goes, oh, this is out of code. Am I correct in thinking that kind of thing?
Again, if, if there, it's not being touched, then it's considered existing and it's, you know, can stay there. And then the hard thing on, on this whole thing is, you know, you have houses that were built in the 1900s. You have houses that were built in the 1970s. You have houses that were built in the 1990s. So again, the code cycles and some of them probably haven't been updated since those time periods, right? So again, so how do you write an exhaustive list or even a list that's, you know, 50% accurate? Because, you know, the things that, you know, are going to be required in one may not be required in the other. And again, a lot of it, so much of it's going to depend on the amount of work, you know? And for example, again, like, you know, there's things that don't require a permit, you know? If you're going to, you know, hang new cabinets or do new flooring or those sorts of things, like, you know, the permit's not required. So again, like it's, you know, trying to find that balance of getting the information out there, but not making it to where people like, well, you didn't have that on here. I didn't know how to do it, you know? So that's kind of, you know, the hard thing.
Well, because I also think in terms of the fact, like with, with my mom's house, her insurance company required a rewiring of her house, not the city. Okay? So that, that can, that may be one thing, I guess, if, if we want to talk about the, what the international, you know, the upgrade of those codes are, I guess we can, you might want to let the homeowner know something about that, just if nothing else to educate them on what kind of electrician they may need to come in and, and do that. But I don't, I don't understand, I'm just trying to keep a, I'm just, I'm just trying to get an idea of how, how far we really want to go with having something comprehensive for the public as well. That, that's what I just want to understand.
Go ahead, Mary.
All right. This will be my last comment. I, I like James's. Okay. I, I like James's example of having like the top eight or top 10 or top five, whatever it may be, these are the big changes that you need to think about when you're going to be remodeling. I understand the difference between the years and so forth. The disclaimer is going to have to be, things are going to be different based on how old your house is, right? And these are just examples, some highlighted examples of the code, but all the details are in the code. So I don't know if that answers, Carol, does that answer your question?
We're gonna, we're gonna do something and we're gonna bring it to you.
Okay.
And hopefully that'll be good.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
I'm liking that. Okay. Do you have any questions for us or do you feel like you've got clear direction sort of, kind of?
I'm with Carol.
Okay. There's going to be something coming. All right. Anything else? Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I just reiterate my two cents. I think we're not asking for a whole technical manual and this kind of can be less than more. Like the idea of just the general announcement that there's been an update to changes. Some things may impact you, maybe even that disclaimer, like you explained to us about where is residential and where is building code? Where you need a professional saying if you choose to do these on your own, here's a few highlights. And again, that disclaimer that this is not a comprehensive list and that you should check this actual code for more details. I think it could be fun to try and limit it to just like a page or two, like not rewriting a whole technical manual, just a little blurb for the public, pointing to more information, if there's anyone they can contact for questions, anything like that, or even just say contact, you know, contractor. And then also just wanted to reiterate too, that we're also looking into the gender neutral language and the changes from the committee. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, that looks like about it. Thank you for the presentation and we'll look forward to. Oh, we did vote to present it to committee.
Yes, you're right, you're right.
But thanks for, okay. All right, community development will be next and Mary Alice, you're on.
I'm on? All right, so I think the order is, is that I make a motion for a package of the items two through 19. And then, yes, so that's my motion is to make that package.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any quick discussion? Go ahead, Jay.
I'm just letting folks know that I will be abstaining for the discussion on the youth services grants because of a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will have a.
Are we okay? Point of order, could we, could we leave one off so that Jay can participate in the?
The recommendation I was given was to abstain from any discussion or vote on this matter.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, James. Okay, so we're gonna have a voice, voice vote to, on the motion to bundle this into an omnibus package, the agenda items two through 19. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against say nay. The ayes have it, so we will have, this will be one omnibus package. And Braden, you are, you are on, sir.
Good evening, everyone, and I apologize for the amount of paper on this packet. So on the agenda tonight are the youth services grant agreements for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 2023 through 2024, beginning on July 1. So again, as was previously mentioned, this is items two through 19 on your agenda. And on your monitor, you see this is just a high level overview of the agencies and the programs that we will be funding this fiscal year. You see on the middle column, the funding request and then the recommended amount there as well. Also in your packet is more details on the programs that we're funding, that's in attachment two. And then the evaluation tool that was used to score the applications and to make funding recommendations is, can be found in attachment three. So as noted in your memo, the total amount of funding that we had available this year for our youth services grant program was $300,000. That amount comes from three separate pots of money, $75,000 from city general funds, $25,000 from the community development block grant, public service funding, and then $200,000 from a state of Illinois DCEO grant for violence prevention programming. So in total, as you can see on the chart there, the total amount that we are able to award this grant cycle is $298,094 to local agencies that are providing community-based programming and services to low-income Urbana youth. And I want to just say a huge thank you to all of the agencies that applied. We received really phenomenal applications. This was a really, a really great pool of applicants and we're excited to be able to offer funding to each, to each agency that applied. We did, as you'll see on the chart and also as noted in your memo, we did reduce some funding requests. However, we were able to offer funding to every agency that applied, which is really exciting. I also just wanted to say a thank you to everyone who served on the, the grant review committee. Council member Mary Alice Wu, council member Grace Wilkin, and then DeShawn Williams, who is a member of our community development commission. Your insight on these applications and on the funding recommendations was really invaluable. So staff recommends that the committee sends the omnibus package to city council consent agenda with a recommendation for approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Mary Alice.
Thank you for always organizing this so well. I feel like the process just gets better and better every iteration, so thank you for all of your work on this. If I remember correctly, we had talked a little bit about kind of fee for service. And what that means is for, for every child in Urbana, you get X number of dollars if you provide this service. And I thought that that was Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Did we do that for the rides? Is that right?
Yes, and that's in their grant agreement. So basically what that enables us to do is there's a reporting process. So every agency that we fund will have to submit quarterly reports and also quarterly reimbursement requests. And in those reports, they will indicate the number of Urbana youth that they're serving. There's a little form that they have to fill out and then they're getting reimbursed for that, for those residents up to the cap that is the funding recommendation.
There was one other one that we were doing that too, but I can't remember which one we had recommended.
It was, it was.
Was it Solagration?
The refugee center program as well.
Yeah, that's right. The, yeah, okay. I just wanted to highlight that because it is a lot of paper for people to read and maybe they didn't catch those two pieces. But that was, those were the only two that it was basically you get paid for every Urbana person that you assist on a quarterly basis. Everything else is a grant.
Yeah, and we do realize that a lot of these agencies, you know, reach across Wright Street. So we just want to make sure that the funding is going specifically toward Urbana residents.
Okay, anybody else? Chandra.
I just, I just hate, I hate that we had to use this much paper. And can we like look into not ever doing this again? I mean, no, I'm serious because.
I wouldn't appreciate that.
How many trees are these? I think that like this chart and the memo probably could have been sufficient. And same way with this ARPA stuff too, but just FYI for future.
You have to have the resolutions that you're voting on too.
Okay, and, and, you know, the resolution page, that's fine.
Grace.
Just another thank you to everyone who applied, the committee and staff. Braden, it was great working with this, on this as well. Thank you for the opportunity to be involved. I really appreciated that. And I'm really excited to see these programs for youth go out. And I hope that we can continue and continue to grow this program too, right? Because I think this funding is up even from last year and I hope that we can continue it and continue to grow. Because I think this is really important to fund those who specialize in this kind of stuff, where the city might not be making our own, you know, tutoring program here in the city building after school, but there are groups that specialize in this and we can support them. So thank you so much for that.
Any other, James?
Do you need a motion to approve the omnibus?
You better let me handle this, okay? I do need a motion and I'm going to ask that a motion be made to approve the following resolutions to be sent to the consent agenda, the next city council meeting, the following resolutions.
Could you keep it off the consent agenda so I can vote on other things on the consent agenda?
Okay, this will be on, just to the regular council meeting. Very good. Thank you, Jay. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 034R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, youth services agreement, business elevator 21st century readiness. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 035R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, youth services agreement, Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, CU Farm to School. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 036R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Park District, Youth Scholarship Program. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 037R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Park District Pickup Basketball League. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 038R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Park District Fresh King Hangout. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 039R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Park District, again, Outreach Swim Lessons. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 040R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Rape Advocacy and Counseling and Education Services, Survivor Services, Trauma Therapy. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 041R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, Community Development Block Grant Agreement, Rape Advocacy, Counseling and Education Services, Survivor Services, Trauma Therapy. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 042R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, East Central Illinois Mutual Assistance Center, Newcomer Immigrant Student Support. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 043R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Crisis Nursery Safe Children Program. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 044R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Dream Hope Scholars Mentoring Program. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 045R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central Illinois, Community-Based Mentoring Program. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 046R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Youth Assessment Center. Resolution number 2023, my, dash 05 dash 047R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Solagration Agricultural Education Program Center. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 048R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Steam Genius DBA Hip Hop Express, Urbana Loving You Tour. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 049R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, The Well Experience, Well Kids Learning Hub. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 050R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Urbana Connection, Neighborhood Connections, Community Study Center. And resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 051R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connections, Youth, Urbana Youth Development Program. All these to be moved to the city council meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Any discussion? James.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the, the thanks to staff, to the council members and the community development committee board member that helped with this. This is a great collection of agencies that are doing great work in our community. It's really satisfying to be able to support them in these projects.
Thank you. Anybody else? Chandra.
Yeah, I too am, am happy to see the breadth of programs that have applied this, this funding cycle. I think we see some, some new names and some familiar ones too. So I'm glad to see that the, the opportunity is hitting more organizations and the funding amount is, is very significant this, this year. So I'm happy to see that too. Thank you.
Okay, these are all resolutions, so this will be a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it and that will be sent to the next city council meeting.
And just noting again, I'm abstaining from voting, making sure that's in the record.
Yeah, that's right, with an abstention from all persons called city. Okay, you're on.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we package the agenda items 20 to 32.
Grace, seconded by, I'm going to give it to Sharice. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Grace.
I had an abstention from one of these, item 21, if we could separate that one. And then when we bundle, we can still discuss individual ones when we bundle them, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'd say item 21, if we could pull that one for Champaign County Environmental Stewards, please.
I'm okay with that adjustment. So then we would be packaging item 20 through 32 minus 21. Is that correct?
Clerk, would it be better if we bundle them first and then make an amendment motion to separate out?
She just did that.
Okay, okay.
When she asked for that to be taken out. You don't have to repeat.
Okay, thank you, okay. All right, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Okay, so they are bundled except for 21, Grace, is that right? Okay, all right. So, community, I mean, Will, you, front and center. You are called off the bench and you'll be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I made my resolution title shorter, so mine should be a little bit easier to get through. And I think I had a couple less. All right, thank you, everybody. Before the council tonight are 13 ARPA resolutions. Does it just have to be close here? All right, sorry about that. So before the city council tonight are 13 resolutions to enter into ARPA sub-recipient agreements. The city of Urbana, just a little bit of history, approved the concept plan list on February 27th and allocated just shy of $10 million of funds to 25 projects. And as part of that allocation, each project must enter into a sub-recipient agreement that details the dates, funding distribution, timeline, performance standards, reporting requirements, and any additional terms and conditions. So before the council today are 13 agreements representing about $6.8 million worth of funds. 10 projects were previously approved or the sub-recipient agreements were previously approved by city council. And then the two remaining projects are projects that are being undertaken by the city and they don't have a sub-recipient agreement because we don't have one with ourselves. But we do have, I can, I'll get to it later, but we do have something for our city projects. So overall, the awarded projects were from, all the ARPA projects were funded at about 53% of their request on average. And generally speaking, sub-recipient's have responded to this partial level funding in one or two, one of two ways or a combination of both. Either reducing their project scope proportionally to the funding request or utilizing other funds. So in the memo today, I did highlight a couple of projects that have non-routine adjustments from when the project allocation came out. So I'll just go over those real briefly. So the Urbana Park District has requested that all 2 million of their funds be distributed upfront in a single upfront payment. And the reason behind this one is that by having a single upfront payment, it will save them a significant amount of interest rate expenses that they would incur by issuing debt for their project. So talking to the park district, by issuing it all upfront, it saves them the most amount of interest expense, what they estimated to be about $250,000. Quarterly reimbursements does have some expense, but not nearly as much. When you have, I think it was maybe 160, it's in attachment A in their document of the 700 pages that were in the packet. It's in attachment A in their document of the seven hundred pages that were in the packet, um, or seven hundred ARPA pages that were in your packet at least. Um, so the upfront payment, the two million dollars saves them the most interest rate expense. That's the logic behind that one. Cunningham Township has modified as another one that has slightly different, uh, changed the project scope since the allocation was made. So during the allocation process, um, during the discussion, council gave some general direction that the funds were for three hundred and ninety thousand for direct assistance and two hundred and sixty-eight thousand and change for facilities. Uh, the sub-recipient agreement in front of you today has a little bit slightly different, uh, allotment of the funds were three hundred thousand dollars for direct assistance, a hundred and forty-eight and change for facilities, and two hundred and ten for personnel. And the logic behind this one was that Cunningham Township needs personnel in order to allocate those direct assistance funds. A third project that has slightly different from the standard, uh, adoptions or changes where Champagne Township, they were funded at twenty-five percent of the request. So they neither decreased their scope nor have they secured alternative funds, which this isn't really a significant change from their project that was proposed. It just simply kind of makes the date in which there's a funding gap closer than they originally proposed. So no changes, just the funding gap occurs quicker. And then Champagne County Environmental Stewards, um, they've had some modifications to their project scope since they were, um, allocated funds. Uh, the whole, the concept hasn't really changed, um, except the, the small changes that they have, um, are as opposed to content, the application contemplated renovation of a site. Where they are now is they have a single site that they're looking at, that they're ready to purchase and build a new facility at. Additionally, their timeline has been elongated from when they purchasing the site to when the capital campaign will be completed. Um, so those are kind of the two big ones. Uh, what that does from the city perspective is they have with the two phases, um, there's, you know, a large gap between when the city's ARPA funds will be used and when the project, um, will have all the funds that it needs to be, um, successful. So we did add a condition for that project that mostly states that the site has to be used for something that's within the overall intent of the ARPA funds. And you can read the entire condition there. And then we also, as part of that, we requested them to provide a little bit more timely updates along the process so that we can be aware of how things are going. And the last project that has a little bit of a change from when the projects were allocated funds was Champagne County EDC and Justine Peterson. So if you remember, the application was kind of a joint proposal between Champagne County and the EDC and Justine Peterson, whereas the sub-recipient agreement, um, from a technical perspective is just with Justine Peterson, although the sub-recipient agreement does specify, um, how Champagne County EDC will be involved. So they're still working together, but the recipient agreement is just with the EDC. So that's really the quick overview of all the projects. I think we've talked about them a lot, so that's all I have today. Thank you.
Any questions? Chandra?
I kind of want to go back to the environmental stewards, um, thing. So when does their campaign begin? Do you know?
Chris, do you know?
I can try and give some guesses, but also Susan Monte is in the audience who's the expert.
Is your mic?
Several of the sub- recipients are here. If you have questions, um, if not, we can always reach out to them. But, um, I can look it up really quick on the, um, attachment A.
And then while you're looking that up, the additional question would be, okay, if the campaign fails, which I hope it does not, um, and the already, the already purchased land or whatever other things they purchased with ARPA funds, they would have to use that spot, um, to provide safe waste disposal. How does that happen? I, I guess I'm just trying to see how that would happen if they don't have.
Mm-hmm. So the, the camp, the purchase of the property in the beginning of kind of the prep work for the campaign starts in the third quarter this year, and then the campaign is running for about a year and a half with construction, um, according to schedules, slotted to begin in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five. So that's kind of the, the duration of that timeline. Um, the second question was, how does the, how do we, what is, can you repeat the second part? Sorry.
I know. Uh, I just, I guess I'm trying to figure out how to formulate the question. Like if it's unsuccessful and they don't get enough money to build a building and we, they've already, we've already given them the ARPA funds, like what, what does that look like? What does project's original intent of providing opportunities for safe waste disposal to Urbana residents look like in the event they don't have enough money to build a building or whatever it is?
There's a, a couple of things I didn't include in the packet. Um, you know, we talked about this with the, um, environmental stewards. They have a couple of different options they could. Um, we didn't put those options as the requirements in the condition to keep it a little bit more vague, um, but I can share the list that they shared. But that's not an exclusive list. There's just a couple of different recycling alternatives that are not, um, maybe as, as an ideal use. It's not what they want, but, um, you could use it for a certain type of recycling activities.
Okay.
So I have something that I can share with you later if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we knew or they had an idea of what could be done in the event it doesn't happen. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and especially with the way that, um, we structured the agreement where, you know, with the timeline, um, you know, and having the multiple reports, the additional reports is, um, if, you know, we're, if we're working towards that way, it won't, um, there'll be an opportunity to provide input as well, um, as part of this contract. So it's not a, a one and done, and we never see it. Um, if it, you know, in the worst case scenario where it doesn't look like it's going to succeed from the ARPA standpoint, then there's opportunities to kind of discuss it further.
Sharice?
Um, the question that I have regarding this, this huge skein of, of paper also is that, um, on, with the revolution, with the resolutions, uh, was included but not mentioned, the memorandum of understanding that between the city of Urbana regarding, um, the, uh, relining of the laterals as well as the, um, roof, uh, repair, uh, monies that we, that we allocated. And I, I just want an, um, because there was an earlier email as well as constituents, and I've been getting also, um, uh, calls regarding why, what that is and, but I wanted to also understand and have it explained. I kind of understand, but I needed it explained for my constituency, why there, why this memorandum of understanding is not included in the resolutions.
Yeah, so the, the, and I said I would mention it, and then I failed to mention it. So there's the two city projects, with the sanitary sewer and the roof replacement. So those are not a resolution. Um, I think from a technical perspective, you can't, I think, um, there's not a need to enter an agreement with ourselves, um, from that perspective. So, um, what we did is, and, you know, I know there's been some talk on a federal level about clawing back ARPA funds. Um, so to memorialize the allocation, uh, we borrowed something that our grants division has done for other grant projects that.
Speak up, speak up, into the thing.
So we borrowed kind of a technique from our grants division that they use for other federal funds. When there's an obligation to obligate the funds by a certain time is, uh, we signed a, an MOU between different departments, um, that just solidifies the project scope and the project timeline. The way we structure those MOUs, uh, we call them something different, but they follow the same format as all the resolutions. So you'll see a couple pages of very generic boring MOU language. We have the single page attachment A that has the timeline, kind of the, the gist of the scope, and then you have the executive summaries and presentations all attached to it. So it follows the same format. It uses a different terminology just because it's, the city doesn't need to enter agreement with itself necessarily.
But there needs to be something documented that the city will be getting ARPA funds for these particular projects. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, so it's so that if ever there's, when the commitment deadline is twenty twenty-four, this way, once that deadline passes, we can say to the U.S. Treasury, "Look, our funds are committed. Here's the official document that we have with ourselves." So it's a, it's a formal step to officially allocate the funds internally from a federal reporting standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Grace?
Um, along the line with the MOU for the sewer laterals in your, like how you explained boring legal language, um, I was trying to understand the termination there, the non-performance and termination, um, saying that I guess the city can terminate the MOU in writing to public works. Um, I didn't know if there's a, what's the contingency plan there and does it come back? I'm not seeing the process where it might come back as like a public council kind of decision.
Mm-hmm.
Or what happens in that case?
So I don't have a kind of written decision tree in my head of what would happen if an internal city project failed. Um, I think the natural result would be it just kind of, it would remain or go back to the city's ARPA fund that we have and, um, a decision at that point would have to be made. But, um, I don't have anything specific for that question, if, what happens if that one failed or it didn't get completed?
Could we clarify that in here? Would that be possible to add just a little, you know, would, if, you know, if it's terminated, then that money goes to other designated ARPA things and kind of restart that process? Because it just seems to me like if that weren't the case, then that would be, to me, this would be a bigger deal if we terminate it than just say, "Oh, public works, we're terminating." That seems like that'd be a whole big process. Then what do we do with the money and who makes those decisions? And so I just didn't see that in here.
Um, I mean, I, we can add some language. The, from one thing that I heard though, is we don't have any other ARPA allocations or, um, fund or programs to give it to at this point. It's, um, so we would have to take, undertake a new process is what, so you want, so what you're saying is you want to say that in the MOU?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I think that is exactly what I'm getting at. So just that even say in a few years with a whole new council and stuff too, and we forget like this ARPA fund, now what happens? I think it might be important to lay out what are the steps to that, you know, not as detailed, but saying, you know, it will go to other or in a pool of ARPA funds and be determined through a process with council about how those funds would be spent.
Okay. Sharice?
I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, um, you're saying, you are, you are suggesting that the MOU, if terminated, why would it be terminated? I want to understand that hypothetical.
Um, for me, or?
You are, Grace. She brought it up. I'm, my take is I don't understand why it would be terminated anyway.
I brought it up because it's written as point number five, non-performance and termination already in there. And as Will nicely said, some of that standard boring language in any contract, that there's always typically some termination.
Mm-hmm.
So it says based on non-performance. So I'm guessing that means if it weren't completed in time, um, which I think that we don't anticipate. I don't anticipate that to be the case. Um, but it might also not be all or nothing. What if by the timeline there's some money, some work remaining? I don't know.
Okay, I, I, okay, that's a better explanation for me at least. I guess the thing that I'm thinking in terms of is regarding, since it has to be spent by a certain time, um, that if, like, let's say we just, that, that some of it gets done, I, I'm assuming that this will be spent in the way that it's supposed to be spent, because if not, then it goes back to the federal government. That's what would happen to those funds. It's not like we get to put them in a whole other, you know, account. There are, the federal government, from my understanding, it now is trying to claw back monies that have not been, um, have not been appropriated with diff, in different municipalities, um, already. And so the whole, the whole idea of even having an MOU in the first place is to make sure that these monies are in writing are properly appropriated for public works into this particular project, to these particular projects. So, uh, um, my assumption regarding when, when we talk about, you know, termination, that, that particular clause, that I don't think that, I don't know that those funds, if it's not used in time, I don't know that those funds could be reallocated. I think they would have to be sent back.
So lots of hypotheticals here.
Yeah, lots of hypotheticals.
The, as it was originally written, and the final rule was December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, whereas if something were to happen prior to that date, um, it is today theoretically possible that those funds could be reallocated. Um, however, it's kind of, there's been in the news a few times with the potential, um, clawbacks as part of the, the debt ceiling negotiations of unspent ARPA funds. Whether or not that option will exist in the future, I don't know. Um, but again, it's a lot of hypotheticals. But, um, from a MOU standpoint, um, right, it can be, I think, as simple as a sentence that, you know, should this project not occur and, you know, ARPA funds are still available, um, you know, it will be committed to you, you know, following the goals of the concept plan or something very, um, similar to that. And, you know, the whole idea is that we never have to go into that scenario anyways, so, um, but, yeah.
Mary Alice?
So I guess my confusion is with the, um, ARPA requirements. So under number one, it says ARPA allocation contingency. So based on what you've talked about, so this is a city, uh, projects where there's no like ordinance or, sorry, resolution that we allocate the funds, so, because this is an internal project. But by putting in there that the contingency of, um, adequate grant funds are not received by the executive department, oh, so adequate grant funds from the U.S. Department of Treasury, I understand that it's contingent upon that, but it, does that put us at a weird state with the project starting of the two thousand and twenty-four? I'm trying to figure out the window if there, if the federal government's going to claw back money. I'm just trying to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity here.
So, um, I won't put my lawyer hat on, uh, even though it's a lot of fun. But, um, so these con, these agreements, uh, were structured, um, almost identically to the ones that we've used for CDBG home, other ones. So it's a lot of boilerpoint language where, you know, maybe CDBG was changed to ARPA. Uh, we did that because we know that's what the U.S. federal government likes to see in an MOU with yourself, to count it as allocated. So we have all the ARPA funds in our bank account now. So I think this is probably a section that is unnecessary in many respects because we do have all the money and, um, so we know where we have it. Um, but we just use the exact same format as the previous ones to make sure we ticked all the boxes on the federal level if it ever came to it.
Okay, so, so it sounds to me like, uh, that's, the first one is, is not necess, necessary, but it's in there because that's how federal paperwork is filled out. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chandra?
Um, what is this PowerPoint? Is this the people that you're going with for the lateral, something?
The PowerPoint was from the ARPA presentations in December, so.
What?
I'm not, I, I don't recall off the top of my head. That was, um, whatever was submitted then is, was attached now, but I'm not familiar with the specifics.
It doesn't look familiar. Okay, thank you.
I think I heard Tim say it's a case study.
Grace?
Okay, so if I could just loop background, it sounds like we're going to add, trying, looking to try and add some language about termination and what happens with, could we do it for both of them, for the sewer lateral and the, the roof repair? Especially just because it seems, you know, like it can be terminated in whole or in part, the convenience of either party, um, which, you know, we don't expect anything to happen, but I think it would be good to have in writing just to say what that means. This money would be flagged into another pool and reallocated in a process.
Yeah, it, it should be pretty straightforward. Um, I don't know if you'll get the, the signed version, uh, for next week, but it'll be in the contract.
Okay, any, Grace, go ahead.
I had, um, discussion I wanted to bring out about another, um, project on the Park District Health and Wellness Center. And I do apologize, I thought I had brought this up in all of our conversations, but I think in all of the many discussions, I may not have. Um, so understanding that it's also late in the game for this, but I still do want to bring it up, and I think that there might still be some opportunity to have some spirit of what I'm talking about included. Um, definitely understand the upfront payments and avoiding their interest stuff. What I'm trying to get at the spirit of it is whenever possible to prioritize some of their public free amenities. And so I'm not sure also if Will or others, if there's, um, others here knowledgeable to speak on it, kind of the status of that plan, because what I recall, there's a lot of indoor spaces that will be paid membership, and that they're also looking to construct an outdoor playground, water park, public spaces that would be freely accessible to the public. And my thoughts here that I meant to bring up earlier in this process was if there's a way for them to prioritize some of those free public spaces with particularly our, ARPA contribution, um, to me, that's what I think is a big asset. And I'm worried that depending on how their funding was going, that that was one of the things that might be cut from this project. And so, um, I don't know if there's information on the status of the outdoor amenities, or if there's a way to, you know, uh, suggest that they prioritize that whenever possible.
Mary?
I had a conversation with the director of the Park District at the groundbreaking last weekend. The ARPA money that we're allocating and in fact, all the, all the funding from the various, um, state and federal sources go toward construction of the facility itself. The outdoor amenities are not funded at this point. The outdoor amenities are not funded at this point. However, they're already beginning the process of applying for additional grants for the outdoor publicly accessible facilities. So all this funding that you have allocated is for the construction of the building and the facility and equipment.
Was that, I don't recall that being a part of the discussion, like when they were here presenting, they were talking about the possible outdoor one. I didn't recall that being brought up before, that this request was specifically for their indoor facilities.
Yes, it was, yeah. And they had to value engineer the outdoor when the costs increased. But there are other grant funds that they're seeking for building the outdoor. There'll be additional fundraising efforts and, and the social service grants that, similar to the social service grants that you approved earlier tonight, in the future, there could be applications for social service grants for scholarships for use of that facility as well. So there's opportunities through social service grants as well.
Chandra.
Yeah. From what I understand, they're, they're, they are doing something to ensure that the facility is accessible to those folks that live in that neighborhood, who are, are typically lower income families or in that underserved neighborhood. And so if that, I, I definitely expect the Park District to, you know, stand by that and, and making sure that, you know, their facility is accessible to all. Yeah, I, I, yes, I did see that $10,000 for scholarships, and I hope that they continue to apply every year for that youth services grant, so that there is a pool of money to offer scholarships for families to use this facility, because otherwise, like, it wouldn't have had my support. So I, I'm pretty sure that, I, I think the Park District will make efforts to make sure that it's accessible, as that's the conversation I had with the Park District Director.
Mayor, did you want to?
No, go ahead, James.
James, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was able to be at the groundbreaking, it was one of the first things I got to do out in the public since I, I got back. But I did have a very good conversation with Representative Ammons and one of the Park District staff about how we ensure that and expand that question about how the neighborhood is invited in and supported in utilizing the resources that are there. So we, we have a number of people that are interested in keeping an eye on that and asking that it be more than just $10,000 in scholarships in the longer term, because it, that community has to be invited in. There can't be a barrier, even, even, you know, forcing people to ask for help to do that is a barrier. And so we have to work, we're going to have to work on that. I, I do want to add that I had no question about the fact that what the Park District was coming to us for was money to help build the building, because the costs had increased due to supply chain, COVID, so forth. I was not looking at this as a basket of items that we were looking at in the project and saying, this is the part we're funding. I looked at it as, this is how we're helping this project come to fruition.
Mary Alice, will you take the chair?
Sure, the chair recognizes Chris.
Thank you. So I had pretty extensive meetings with the Park District executive staff, and I had three requests. I had that the building would be built with minority contractors and women-owned contractors, and they promised a 30% level. The second thing I asked for was that the, when the building is finished, that the building would be staffed by minorities and women as, as part of the staff working at the building. And they, and they promised to do that as well, to the degree they can. And then the third thing was this, making it accessible. And I would just submit, and I think everybody is saying the same thing here, is that it's not entirely on the Park District to make sure things are free and accessible for the community in that area, because they got to keep the lights on, they got to pay staff, they got to pay for maintenance of that building. So it's going to be up to the rest of the community, including us, that we make funds available for, for that accessibility. And I'll take the chair back.
All right, I relinquish the chair back to Chris.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask, I'm, I'm going to ask for a motion to do the bundled omnibus resolutions first and then come back to Agenda Item 21 separately second. Can I do that? Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve for the consent agenda next week, the following resolutions. Resolution number 2023-05-52R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Urbana Park District. Resolution number 2023-05-054R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Cunningham Township. Resolution number 2023-05-055R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Champagne Township. Resolution number 2023-05-056R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a, an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Housing Authority of Champagne County Youth Build. Resolution number 2023-05-057R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Housing Authority of Champagne County Steer Place. Resolution number 2023-05-058R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement, Housing Authority of Champagne County SRO Project. Resolution number 2023-05-059R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement, University YMCA. Resolution number 2023-05-060R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement, Urbana School District 116 Alternative Education. Resolution number 2023-05-061R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement, Urbana School District 116 Community Engagement. Resolution number 2023-05-062R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement, UCIMC. Resolution number 2023-05-063R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Champagne County Healthcare Consumers. And finally, resolution number 2023-05-064R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with Justin Peterson. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Okay, this will be a voice vote again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. All those resolutions are sent to the consent, uh, consent agenda for next week. Okay, and that leaves us with one more motion on Agenda Item 21.
I will move Resolution Number 2023-05-053R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Champagne County Environmental Stewardage City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Yes, approval, not consent.
Okay. Motion by Mary Alice, and I second, James, did you second that? Okay, seconded by James Quisenberry. Any discussion? Okay, this will be a voice vote again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
And abstaining from Grace.
And Grace Wilken will, from Ward 6, will be abstent, abstaining. And the ayes have it, and that resolution passes as well. Okay, we got through it. All right, the next thing is I need a motion for a closed session on a property acquisition pursuant to 5 ILCS 120-2, Paragraph C and 5.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, although, I think we'll call a roll call on that, on this? Correct. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Marlin.
Point of order?
Yes.
It's important to note that there are other items potentially on the agenda after the closed session, so we may return and act.
Correct. Good point, James. There will be more items on the agenda after we come out of closed session, but for now, we'll be in closed session. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn, to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Okay, we are back in open session. New business continued. Next item is Ordinance Number 2023-05-015, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, namely 1205 Bradley Avenue in Urbana. And we go to Carol to tell the public, or, no, I'm sorry, Will, go ahead.
Back in there. All right, thank you. So before the council tonight is an ordinance for the purchase of 1205 Bradley Avenue, and this property is a 1.76 acre lot at the southeast corner of Bradley and Goodwin Avenues. The purchase price is $270,000, and we would use this property for the replacement of Fire Station 3 for that new construction project. So going into a little bit of the history, a while back, the city completed a facilities master plan that showed Fire Station 3 was in need for replacement. At that time, the master plan speculated a 5,000 to 7,000 square foot station size from a very high-level vanilla box conceptual level. So in response to that, the city actually purchased property adjoining the current station in 2020, and we purchased that for the flexibility of building a new fire station. So as we were going, undertaking our fire station design and space programming assessment, the budget and associated program that the city council is moving forward with, based off direction from city council, calls for a station that is 8,489 square feet, which is larger than the facility's master plan speculated. And preliminary design layout for the new station shows that development for the new station on the existing site on Lincoln is technically feasible, however, it creates several logistical and operational issues. Two of these are related to ingress, ingress and egress. The first is that there's shared egress with a commercial property to the north, which is not really safe from a fire perspective. And then additionally, on the egress out of the property from the emergency exit, based off the constrained site size, there's required parking there as the fire trucks are leaving, which is also not safe. The site is also constrained for future expansion based off zoning setbacks, so in the future, we wouldn't be able to expand if that was needed. And then there are also some logistical obstacles that the city faces with maintaining operations during the construction period. So what this means is, depending what the obstacles were, we would have to pay to mitigate to keep the oper, fire station operational. So the city conducted and hosted a survey in a fire station open house on January 11th, and community feedback at that time, while limited, did support, generally support the idea of an alternative fire station location. Based off some of the operational concerns in that feedback, the city searched for properties, and we secured the property at 1205 Bradley Avenue. This site would allow for all the development challenges to be mitigated while moving the station off of Lincoln Avenue, which significantly increases safety. And it is near enough to the existing site where there's not projected to be any negative impact on response times. So that's the property and the purpose in a real brief synopsis from fiscal impact. The city has funds available in its capital improvement CRNI fund in the fire station project that we could use to purchase this project in the current fiscal year. If approved by city council, the city would close with a seller on a mutually agreed-upon date, and we would begin work on that site work needed for fire station design immediately.
James.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm some of the information I got earlier, which is the lot that we purchased that's adjoining the current station was purchased for about $250,000. And so when we are done with building a new fire station, if we buy this lot for $270,000, we'll have that parcel and the old fire station parcel as a value that the city can utilize comparatively to what we're moving the fire station to. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Grace.
There's also one to clarify, if you confirm that we don't have set plans, no official plans for the current site, but that that would be up for another conversation at a later date with what to do with the old sites. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and make a motion. I'll move Ordinance Number 2023-05-015, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate at 1205 Bradley Avenue in Urbana, Illinois to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Next item is Ordinance Number 2023-05-016, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate, namely 131 and 205 North Ray Street. And now Carol can help us.
Thank you. So tonight, with this ordinance, we are recommending that the city purchase the former site of the School District 116 Headquarters and Adult Education Building in order to advance the purposes of the Central TIF. And so by way of background, the School District has tried to sell this site twice in recent years. About a year ago, the process that they have to use is that they must obtain an appraisal, and then they go through an auction process, and through the auction, they may not accept an offer that is below the appraised value, and that is set as a minimum bid. And then if that fails, then they can go out with a commercial broker or go out with a broker. So about a year ago, they went out for an auction with a minimum price of $950,000. That failed. They engaged a commercial broker who then listed the property for $1,150,000, and that failed to generate any offers that were acceptable to the School District. More recently, they went out and had an auction, and the minimum bid, they got a new appraisal, the minimum bid was set at $450,000. They did not get an acceptable bid that met the minimum, but they did get a bid at $113,000. We've been in conversation with the School District recently in their efforts to, to sell the property, and we made them an offer that we would match the offer. They were not able to accept through the auction process at $113,000. And, and if they would agree not to go out with a broker again, which we thought was going to be a fruitless process again, and they, and they agreed to accept our offer at $113,000. And so this is before the council first, and then it will go to the School District in June if you, if you agree with this recommendation. the school district in June, if you, if you agree with this recommendation. So the reason we're so interested in this property is, it's along Race Street, which is an important corridor in downtown. It's located in the Central TIF. It's not only proximate to the Boneyard Creek, but it's proximate to the Boneyard Creek Crossing, which we've invested a lot of money in trying to activate. So this is a real focal point for the downtown. And when we had made a proposal to the council, which they, which you all passed about six months ago, I think, where we were porting money from TIF 2 into Central TIF, we anticipated that we would be involved with this property at, at a minimum with the demolition, funding that with TIF. So now we have the opportunity to also acquire the property using TIF funds. And by having city control over this property, we will have both the flexibility and the control to, to select the developer, to have influence over the development schedule, and ultimately over what is developed there. I don't think anyone, including the school district at this point, would suggest that the building has any value, so we are very, trying to be very clear that we do intend to tear the building down. And we have built into the contract with the school district, the flexibility. They're currently back in the building because of a, of a fire at their, at their current location that they rent from MTD, and so we're giving them some flexibility to deal with that and, and vacate the building when they're ready, and then we'll close shortly thereafter. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
James?
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm something that's implied in the conversation, and that is, because the city is a public body, the school district is a public body, the way they need to go about this is a little more relaxed than if they're trying to sell it.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, not, don't see any. Can I get a motion?
I move Ordinance Number 2023-05-016, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate, 131 and 205 North Race Street.
Second.
Motion by Shandra, seconded by Sharice. Any further discussion, James?
Yeah, I will, I will support this. I think it's important. This property, as it's been pointed out, is on Race Street, which is a corridor that could use some more development. I do, I will say that I do have a small concern with regard to this property and what kind of asbestos abatement might be involved with demolishing it, but I don't think it's a, it's not a concern that would keep me from supporting it. I do know that the, the school district has had challenges keeping their buildings managed from an asbestos standpoint, so, but I do intend to support it. Thank you.
Grace?
I'm also in support of this. I think there's some great potential for downtown. I agree with the purchase and then the demolition, if that's what's necessary. And then I think for the decision on the final use or final plans for that, I'll reiterate, I think does need to be a council and public decision. And so, I will hope that we will have this brought back up and have some input from the public as we serve them on the final use of that lot. And then I also just recently learned about a city-owned surplus property team, which sounds really exciting, and just wanted to make sure that Tim had a highlight from some past discussions, that there are some individuals, some groups that are interested in green spaces, edible agroforestry, putting some of those spots to use. So if we could communicate on that later, I think that could also be great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, discussion is over, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. That'll be sent to the next council meeting. Our next item is council input and communications. James?
I realize this may be a little redundant, because I don't know how many people were watching for the special meeting, but I'll mention again, the Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association is having their annual meeting next week, on Wednesday, May 24th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at St. Matthew Lutheran Church. I would also like to express my thanks for my welcome back tonight and all of the support I've received while I've been a little bit out of commission for a couple of weeks due to health reasons. I do appreciate it, and I do appreciate everything everybody did to keep me connected during that, that meantime, and I'm glad to be back.
Anybody else? Sharice?
I just want to comment regarding the MOU and the, the L Drive subdivision relining of the, of the laterals. So, because I want people in my, in my, in L subdivision to feel secure in the fact that that is going through. It may not happen this year, but there are a lot of things that have to, that have to happen before we actually get work going, namely, making sure that everyone has signed on to it and has, and there's permission by the city to be on your property. So I want to keep that in mind. I also want to say that in June, there will be a meeting at King School for the, regarding, Imagine Urbana, I think it is, and I'll be keeping people in, 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 in touch with, with that, when that meeting starts, so that everyone can, people from the area, from the L subdivision area and going up through Ward 3, will know that, when to come, when to come and give your opinion about what city services are happening, and you'll know what you want and what, what you have suggestions about. That would be nice.
Anybody else? Well, seeing no further, I just want to quickly thank the city clerk, Phyllis Clark, and Mayor Marlin for helping me get through this meeting and with their advice. And with no other business, this meeting is adjourned.